And then we can change. And also, as you're sitting here or you look at it and you see some things that are on, maybe that consent agenda that you would like to have more of a discussion on, and you would like to move that to the discussion items, you could make that adjustment there. As long as it's not personal. And you can just change the order if there's some. Yes, so I'm, so now I might ask if there's any adjustments to the agenda or if we can approve the agenda items. So I would like a motion to approve the agenda. For a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, now we're gonna have a spotlight, the Agri Premier is the aquaponics.
Yeah, thank you for being here.
I'm Justin Law, I'm a teacher here at the high school. I teach life sciences, food science department, and ecology, forestry, biology. Our new biology students, but this summer they participated in a program called Agri Premier. And Alex was a super integral part of that, she'll be right up. Just realizing our power boy that we made, and that ready for you, it wasn't, um, was it share copy? So she's.
Send that.
Real quick and we can, come on.
Sure.
Hi Prescott. There it goes. You got it all perfect? Yeah.
Oh, we have a letter in.
Okay, we just introduced ourselves, Olivia and Bill, so Prescott.
I forget. Ah, we're missing Jonah. He's a bit more out there now, so. And I'm Alex. Ah, no, far still that far, but um, are we good on the slide?
There you go.
Yeah, that one. It's still a lot, I mean. Eighty hours, got about two. Alex recorded everything. We had a sign in sheet, but they forgot to sign in, so I was just sure enough.
And what is agri cooler? That's a crazy word, what is that?
I was, I'm cultured.
Yeah. So what's the whole role, what's the point?
I mean, I don't think any of us really do a lot of reading. And like, when did you use your skills? Like where would you sell?
The farmers working.
Yeah, they went every week except for the first two weeks of the hard day anyway. Um, in part because we didn't quite have anything. So, yeah, and then, I don't know, do you wanna talk about how much you guys made? In total? Split through us.
After, after, it was to pay for some of our expenses, so.
Yeah, um, and then there was one other part besides your kind of hikes up and stuff.
Aquaponics, the aquaponics.
Downstairs. Oh, I, I can chart. They were very cute.
How many sisters?
Two. And we paid for the fish.
We didn't really pay them for sale. A lot of water testing, we did.
Me and Jonah got the stuff, fish food, everything.
That was elected, we have, and some segments, but they repeatedly chose to use the humps, not the humps.
I have to get this thing going. Second, I'm trying to get water.
No one, no one was forced to do that, they chose to do that.
And lose to tell the tale.
Definitely not wrong. Yeah, so these are, I'm sorry, I'm jumping in. Every slug, we can go back one.
Uh, these are all like, all vegetables, I mean, they're big harvest. Lumps, yeah. As you can see, really great, you know, lots of salt, total stock.
That's like a quarter. It's a quarter of the whole profit that we, it's just keep on.
Yeah, that's a good way to think about it. And um, that's also why we grew some of these specific crops, uh, because they're good sellers. They're like high profit margin, they work really well in a high tunnel, um, which is what we have to grow space up there. And use that for season extension, so we can get them earlier, um, and everybody else, everybody else is gardeners.
Because it's plastic, it gets, it gets a lot hotter in there, especially in like the spring. Gets cooler outside. So working in there is a pain, it's really hot, but it also causes the fruit to break a lot faster. And so we get things like, often people walk the block, they lift their arms along, that's where anybody else is. Yeah, you did.
Brian's meeting. Also, that's because Brian's high tunnels under water for part, and we have breeze beds. But, yeah, you got, you should count that as a win. Yeah, we can, so, I'll just talk about these ones, because part of this program, a big part happens before these guys even start. Um, because we have to prep the beds, uh, we had to replace some of the breeze beds, the boards were rotted. Um, and we have to amend the soil, we have to start the seeds, like some of these seeds were started in March even. Um, and then pot them up and then eventually transplant them. So these guys missed all of that, because it was before school was out and the program begins in June. Um, but the kids who did it were Mr. Long's classes, so he has biology classes, he has food science and the environment, ecology. And I think we even wrote forestry in occasionally, wanted to have him do something. So this year is then applying or amending the beds with basically organic compost that we brought. Um, and we're kind of refilling some of them, because those two middle ones are just wood. Yeah, let's go to the next slide. Um, and then this is, uh, basically we're potting up some of the seeds into larger pots that we, that students started. In the aquaponics lab, which we're able to do and start them so early, because we have artificial lighting that we use to grow microgreens in the winter. Um, but also it allows us to do all the, like thousands of native plant seedlings, um, and all these vegetables. Let's get to the next one. I don't think so, are you clicking, how many am I? Oh, it's like only works half the time.
Do you think it takes like, it's like, there's like.
A lag. Okay. Um, yeah, and so then this is May, so things are really like take a little bit, so if they're like sunburned. Um, but maybe one of you guys can kind of talk about like what we're looking at in the bed on the right. Couple different species of plants and a system that we can use.
Yes, there's tomatoes on either side, the two beds in the center, you can see on the right side. And then down the center of each bed is a row of beets and scallions, and then later basil too. And that is called intercropping, can use it. It's, so that the beets ripen a lot faster than the tomatoes do, because it intercepts and grow a lot more, but they start feeding. So by the time the beets are over, the tomatoes start coming in, and so it's a little, it's a long and long for the bed.
And getting like twice as much value or, or profit out of one bed. And also we have the beets lumps earlier before we have tomatoes.
Super popular, and.
Yeah, they were actually.
And pancakes, for sure.
Which, I remember you were like, why are we planting all these, who's gonna eat all of these trees? And then, so go out.
Just hold on like fifteen. Usually before making a tree.
Cool, so this was kind of a big step ahead, but this, that was from May to June, and you can see that things are growing a lot now. Um, and maybe one of you guys can kind of talk about what's going on in this photo.
Um, we.
We're pruning, pruning the trees.
Yeah, so pruning the, the vegetables. Kind of like redirecting their energy, send out all these. Don't necessarily. Wrap them around vines.
Twines.
Twine, yeah.
Yeah, orange strings you see from the.
So they grew upwards and, and the fruit turned out a lot better. Created a lot faster than.
Yeah, nice, huh? Um, and we did that for the tomatoes, which is the beds were on there, and then cucumbers also. And then there's some of the famous seeds. Yeah, and then in that other photo, uh, they're harvesting scallions and possibly trellis and peppers. Uh, then what's happening in these photos?
Auction. First part is us, we have to auction, sanitize all of them to make sure that there's nothing harmful on any of them. So we put like, it's like extracted nitrogen peroxide in the water, and we pump them in there to make sure that it kills like bacteria that are on the plants. And then you spray them off to get any dirt off. And that's our cleaning process. And then, the second photo is us at the farmer's market. Just sold a lot of different things. Carrots, carrots, shards, and kale, I'm not gonna show. One of my marketing strategies, he said farmer's market, it's having a few six car.
Oh, yeah. So, go see later, um, he's kind of playing his guitar, choosing.
Oh, yeah.
Um, yeah, I feel like that's a key element, but I think you're just born with it. I don't even think you learn it at the market. This one is from August, so it's a little later, so you can see, you can have like a diversity of crops here. We've got all sorts of types of tomatoes, cucumbers, carrots, kale, shards, um, yeah, quite a lot of stuff.
Oh, yeah, that's our sign.
Got written down.
It, it, I think it got written down, it's just.
Um, yeah, here's just another one, like there were regular lumps of people, kind of flocking to the food.
There's the schmoozing one.
Did you have a lot of people ask the questions for this one?
We did actually, but less than I expected, we had some people, but a lot of people did just came up and bought, not as I expected, a lot more people asked questions.
Yeah.
It sort of surprised me how few people did ask questions. There was the occasional person who was really interested in that, for like ten minutes.
It wasn't necessarily like. My vegetables and that.
One.
There were some people who didn't necessarily.
Oh, that's awesome. And you guys got really good at determining when tomatoes are gonna be ripe, I feel like that's the biggest question people ask you. Oh, we want a tomato for the weekend, which one? Yeah, this is the high. This is the high tunnel, we have a brutal down there that Prescott planted, um, and this is kind of similar to what it looks like now, although today we just ripped out the cucumbers. Um, so you can see the trellising on those twines, um, and how that really allows a lot of airflow for the tomatoes and the fruit is just visible and you can pick it easily. Um, and really they're like, all the way up to half inches.
If you look at our garden at home where we did trellis, there was so much more fruit there than at our garden, like, in just one bed there, we probably had, like, four tomatoes than you have in a whole garden at home.
Oh, my gosh.
It's a tremendous amount more fruit.
It's easier to see too. And that helps you pick it faster, which, uh, encourages the plant to continue thinking, because you're not letting it complete its life cycle, like you're not letting, uh, tomato rot on the vine. Which tends to happen at a home garden, because it's a jungle, and you can't find them.
Yeah, sort of like, the starting, I mean, there were like shapes and formations of the guy that the plant's with. One of their trying the cucumbers. Big jungle, but.
Yeah. And so that's like more like a home garden, not managed for production as much, we don't have quite as extensive trellising for that. And it's not wrong, it's just a different system, but you're totally right, it's way harder to find it and slower too.
This, this also maximizes the space, that's because we have very limited space. And so, all our work does is maximize and then. I think that's, sometimes it's completely wasted.
Uh, yeah, here's something, it's like, it's hard drawing people in. The Simon song. Um, and then just more pictures of different stuff, let us, since we had, we had tomatoes, cherry tomatoes, and a couple different areas slices. Yeah, this was just like one of these, so it would go. And then this is just, uh, the final photo of the aquaponics lab.
Yeah. Harvest stuff.
Yeah, we have, we're having, we're trying to, uh, overcome a rips infestation, um, that started last winter. And so, we're having to move the crops through really rapidly, and we're using organic, um, like nee oil and different things, and dijonate the earth right now. But because of all of that, the plants are stressed, and so the fruit looks very nice and they're just not ideal. But I think that we actually have it under control, knock on wood, and I think like pretty much in the next couple of weeks.
Very nice.
Cool. Yeah, that was excellent.
This program, that was not just the students that are new program, it's summer, it's so many students that come from the science department, all our students, so it's pretty awesome, I feel so. All of this is really grateful to have these resources and to have these opportunities and the greenhouses, sounds about it. Pretty awesome, so, thank you.
Thank you. I have a question, um, for the three of you, do you see anything that you would be using in your future? Or is there anything in which you've been doing that you would say, ooh, this is something that I might like to do as a career?
Um, for me, it's not necessarily career, it's like little life skills that I'm, it's a lot of work. So it's like, stop being able to talk to people and have knowledge in the background, but.
Good guys, it did help me a lot, it was like pizza skills and stuff, because I started working at a grain farm for half a true summer, and without like having to do it before that, I probably got beat crazy. I did, I've almost loved driving, ever since I was little, I was always playing stuff with my dad, grown, pretty messy stuff, it was awesome. I was glad I was able to do this for myself.
I mean, so that was a fresh experience. I'll get you.
Just the opportunity to learn about different agriculture practices and specifically sustainable and organic agriculture practices, and also, um, marketing. For entrepreneurship against, I specifically am looking for a career in entrepreneurship, and so this, I think would help and do. Yeah, awesome.
Good job.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Thanks for sharing.
Man, we didn't do any of those kind of things without us in that school.
I know.
That was so cool. All right, let's move on to the administrative reports.
Yeah, we'll have that, yeah, go ahead. Um, so mostly our report just kind of talked about the start of the school year, that's kind of the big focus for the last month-ish. Wrapped up summer school and then really started focusing on the start of the school year. Uh, it's my grade, because we've had at the high school, eight full staff, so that's been awesome to be able to train them in and get them all kind of on the same page, which has been really fun. The first few weeks of school, you saw in my report the pictures, so many just different in-class activities where the kids were doing, moving, and not just sitting when they came in. So that was really great to see, a lot of time I see them outside doing different activities with their classes, so they're getting out, using the, the nice weather and the free spaces that we have, which has been really great. Um, staff and I were, we have focused on our district plans, and so we built our building goals, which I'll send out. Um, and they have focus on where we're headed, and we have staff meeting, trainings, plan that matched those focuses. So we're really zoning in on how are we getting to our strategic plan, each one of those goals, we have a rule set from with. And we're learning about each of those things as we work. So, that's kind of the big things that we've done, huge thank you to the custodial staff. Um, building was gorgeous when the kids came into orientation day, clean, shiny, new, all that good fun stuff. Um, so a huge thank you to them, because they hadn't been doing that stuff with me with them. So, huge thank you to them, but it's just been a great start of the year, so we're excited.
Good for you.
Yeah, really good start, um, really proud of where students and our staff can do that transition, um, after summer. And it's just been great being in the hallways, watching, everything that's happening, like you said, really active hands-on teaching. It's awesome to see. Um, also nice to check in with new students, families, friends every year, um, and to get a chance to do tours and get to them when I think about coming. That's last spring, even last winter, or maybe over the summer, and then checking back in with them out of the reg. Great reports, building friendships, uh, with the staff, and just digging. Uh, just a couple exciting things happening, uh, there's. I believe it's third grade or eighth grade is attending me, so that'll be exciting. Um, each year we have a PTO, one through six, same as last year, it was really a great experience, but we can't live it. So, end of September, and then, um, Fall Fest we have every year, and we're so right in the middle part of CPM, right now. But then in a couple weeks, we're ready to start. So, which I think is like big gap, so I do look up in the press, I'm thinking, whatever connected to these we have. And then I know that this place where I have homecoming, and so it's meant for all kinds of things, that really support, you know, the schools. I thought it connected. A couple transitions at the early learning center, so I really got a chance to work closely with staff and students. Um, and so we, uh, going through the process and we add to that team. We'd add more students. There. And also setting up the KESFREK program for the, it's going to be a big part of that registration. I'm helping get that organized, so we're engaging, and then, um, activities after school. Um, and then my last subject design for curriculum council, and so my first meeting, um, is in March. And that may shift a little bit this year. Um, and so we're going to continue to meet monthly, and we're actually going to be supporting staff. So, kind of think of a model of the PLC, right, and all the content areas and principles, and then not only are we meeting and talking about the work. We're gonna be kind of updating, actually, guys, throughout the year, um, we did talk a lot about the summer curriculum. I'm sure that was one of the others, as well as any. Um, and the one big goal that committee is usually. Working behalf of the sector's updates, and we're actually decided that we've done a great job with that, and we're ready to shift to. We're gonna utilize district updates from the superintendent, um, and just call it to all staff. For any of the best, quickest, we can, we can touch everybody, and then curriculum council. Um, so we reviewed the district strategic goals, just remember that there's a committee that worked on that last spring, which looked very similar to our previous ones, we really outlined three key goals, four sub-goals under each of those goals. And if you look at that document, the first goal and the first sub-goal. Questions, curriculum council taking that entire chunk, and that's really what's gonna be the basis of our work for the entire year. And so we have a couple specific measurable goals within that set guaranteed by working fourteen twelve, and having that really published, easily accessible. Uh, we're working on some accomplishments from act twenty, we're having a discussion about that. And then, um, you might remember this from last year, but just expanding and solidifying those systems. So, um, curriculum council. And then, yeah, I think that's all the options for.
I kind of want to touch on a couple of the yay stories, you talked about a number of new students, um, in both buildings, a lot of students. Um, two yay stories, we had, I have one kid in my building this year who is coming from a different district, and has panic attacks and things like that. And was always very, very scared at school, they had a panic attack, because they were like, they're gonna call, they're gonna call. Well, he had one, and he came into my room and, and working through it, talking through it, and he just was like, you're not gonna call anybody? Why am I gonna call somebody? Talked to the guidance counselor, get you calmed down, and he was like, oh, and then he called, and then he went back to class, and had a successful rest of the day. And I think that is one example of why here, we have so many kids that transfer in, because it feels so safe and so welcoming, and so adaptive to their needs. So, that one was really cool, because it was a pretty massive panic attack, and we were able to work as a team with the guy who's a counselor, to calm that panic attack, and then get him into class, and have a successful rest of the day. So I thought that's like, that's a success story for me, that we have that. And we have another family who was, they have many kids that they brought in at the elementary school, at the high school level, and I just met with the mom the other day, we were just kind of talking, kind of things going. And she said their previous school, their kids never felt welcome, they didn't want to go to school, they didn't want to do anything that had to do with school. And now they've been here since the start of the school year, and she said it's so great to see them, because they are coming home with smiles, they feel like they're doing well, they feel like they're making friends, and they want to be in our district. Um, so those are just a couple of stories, just in the last couple of weeks, that I think really exemplifies, we push academics, but we also push to make sure that the kids feel welcome, that they belong, and that they have the support that they need. And so I think those are just two stories recently that really exemplify that, so I just wanted to share that with you, because of both buildings, the kids are feeling like, want to be here, they like, so, I just wanted to share.
Those are nice stories to hear. Thank you.
You guys don't get to hear that all the time, so.
When is the homecoming?
Uh, it's going to be October eighteenth, um, right now, as far as I know, the, and then this might shift, this is due to wrapping. I think the game right now is scheduled for four o'clock, um, because the refs that we have have to get a different game later. I know they're working on trying to adjust that, because it's our homecoming, so if that does change, I'll let you know, um, but right now it's gonna be on the eighteenth, I think the game's probably gonna be different.
All right, well, uh, in August, of course, we onboarded all the new staff, and we had our back to school in service, which, to be honest, feels like eons ago, at this moment in time, as I was reflecting, it wasn't very long ago. But it does feel like it, um, because since the students have been back, it has just been fast and furious, and smiles, shiny shoes, haircut, so you know, you just see them walking in the hallways, and, you know, connecting with friends. Some newbies who, you know, again, we were all available those first couple days to step in and help guide and direct and provide the support they needed. So I felt like the staff just A-plus in both buildings, just amazing, uh, job. I've been able to peek into a few classrooms, and just seeing the engagement has been awesome, just really, really great learning happening. Students are outdoors learning, they're on the floor learning, they're in their seats learning, they're standing up and learning, so just a lot of variety, and, uh, the staff just couldn't be better. It's just been a really, really positive and just, yeah, just makes me smile every day when I get up to come to work, so it's a good feeling. Uh, excited to attend some sports in the next couple of weeks, so administratively, we've all been tapped into to attend and help supervise and pop in, so we're looking forward to that. A referendum, we're gonna have an update here shortly from, um, Myron and Baird, I don't believe ISG is on this, um, evening, but they'll have some information on our communication strategy, we'll follow up on that. But the website has been updated, so as a board, if you haven't had a chance to get out and see those updates, it will continue to be over time. We'll have an FAQ section, uh, fact sheets have been kind of tweaked and updated, um, and then we're gonna have a roadshow. So roadshow presentation to be able to take on the road and, you know, share with our community, so looking forward to that. Strategic goal work, Angie and Ivy and I are meeting tomorrow to do that, and our plan is to bring that to this group in October. So we're gonna share our plans and strategies for the work, um, over the next probably hundred days, and then we'll do another update in the winter and again in the spring. So that's kind of our short-term goal, um, in that, and then, yeah, Castle Guard Friday, so tomorrow, wear your red and black. Uh, the elementary school has these amazing Castle Guard pins, which I might have taken a couple, um, and put them in my purse to wear, so. So, uh, love it and just we're going to keep that school pride and that school spirit flowing through the year. Yeah. Is it, are we ready to? I think so. We have the referendum communication update next. So I think Cody will help us. No, I, well. Maybe, let's see how this goes. We're going to actually present on our end instead of them, but they should be on the Zoom.
This is Becca, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Great, hey guys. Perfect. And do you see Megan? I know she was having reception issues.
Becca, can you see us through the?
I can see you. And Megan is asking to be unmuted.
All right, can you hear us now?
I can hear you.
Okay. And I have the remote to adjust the presentation, so. We'll, we'll try to coordinate.
Perfect. Megan, are you on?
Yes, good evening, this is Megan. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Awesome, well, um, I will kick off the presentation and I will start by saying thank you for the opportunity to connect virtually today. Um, both Becca and I are on the road and so this is helpful. We have a quick communications presentation to build off of what Denise had shared that we are full fledged communication mode. Um, the website is live and there are roadshow opportunities coming up in which we will discuss. But to kick things off today, we are here to share what we've been doing over the last month. So in, I believe it was August fifteenth, the board had adopted the resolution to go to a referendum. So we have spent the last few weeks creating our referendum brand. The last time we were in front of the board, we chose a logo to move forward. And therefore that logo is what you see on the screen here on the left. And Becca will talk about the importance of that logo. But today we're going to cover the referendum communications plan, talk about what we're doing, how we're doing it, and strategically how it's timed out. Discuss the key components of the twenty twenty four referendum. Again, none of this is new information to you as board members. But what we've done is broken it into bite sized pieces that are easily communicated for the community to understand what is going on. And then lastly, we'll talk about what you can do as a board member when it comes to information sharing. So with that being said, Becca, if you want to roll into the referendum question, so Denise, slide three, please.
We're there.
Becca, do you want to cover this?
Becca may be muted.
Oh, we. Hi Kevin. I can take this. Um, basically, we don't need to read this referendum information. Big picture is this is what the ballot language is. And this is what you had voted on back in April. We are taking that information and we're creating clear, concise communication around it. This is what voters will see when they go to the polls and it's also posted on your website. But our communication materials are talking about the scope of work, the impact to their taxes and how this referendum plan was created. So the next slide actually goes into. Our referendum communication brand.
Megan, my, I'm unmuted now, so I can give you a gag on, sorry about that. Okay, so what you're seeing right now is our referent, referendum communication plan. Of course, we don't need you to read all these little cells, but we just want you to know that it's super intentional. And there's a lot of strategy behind the communication that, that we will be doing, working through until November fifth. So this slide was meant to show you that just rest assured that we have a strategy. This is the strategy we're working through it week by week. Um, with the district and this core team of partners to get, you know, to that, to educate your community the best way we can. You are the next slide. Okay, so this should look familiar to you. This is the referendum logo that, um, between the long range planning committee and the board decided on, um, to be the brand of your referendum. So if you, you know, on every marketing piece, you're going to see this logo on every mailer, you're going to see this logo on the website. This is important and it's important to your community to see the word vote on it because we don't want it to get caught up in the other castle guard information, sporting events and other things. Um, we want them to special note because it says that word vote, which means tax impact, which is especially important. Um, go to the next one. Okay, so then here is a sample of the referendum fact sheet. So what we're going to mail out in, probably hit mailboxes in two weeks, is basically this, this fact sheet. This is going to be our main communication piece that we're going to lean on. It has everything in it. It's, it's actually four pages of like the needs plus the solution plus the tax impact. Everything that your taxpayer is going to need to know. And we lean really hard on this, this exact fact sheet. You probably have some present with you at the board tonight. Um, so this is a really important thing. It's also on your website. All right, Megan, that's you.
All right, next slide Denise. I will break apart some of the components that you will see in the fact sheet. So number one is that what we're calling the key components. Basically what that is, is we've taken the scope of work that we went through and categorized in two different. So picture all the work either fall under capital. Or access. So the capital maintenance component talks about how the district is investing in the building system. Energy efficient alternative. Building envelope.
Are you guys having trouble? Are you guys having trouble here, Megan?
Yeah.
Okay, Megan, I think you're bad service again. So what she had said, so on the screen there, it's the two key components. It's in the fact sheet, we're really leaning hard on these two drivers of this referendum plan. Capital maintenance, it's, you know, um, addressing aging building system needs and accessibility and security within the middle and high school. So those are the two buckets of the, the main messaging we're using for your referendum project. Next slide is going to be the list. It should not be a new thing, this list of solutions for you. Um, everything that we, we've said that we will include in this project, it's listed out there, it's in your marketing, it's, it's on the website, it's, it's everywhere. This is important as you as for board members to know that this, you know, this is the project list. This is what we're committed to doing for this referendum. So, you know, keep an eye on that as that's if, if community members ask you about what, you know, what's in the pro, what's in the program? Cause it's shifted a little bit from the base plan that was in the survey. So this is important information for your community to know. Um, next slide. So this is, this will be the, there's two slides here of the referendum communicate, um, solution, which is the plans. So the first page is the first floor. That's nothing new, that's stuff that's on the website. It's going to be in the fact sheet, shows you that a majority of the project is capital maintenance throughout the entire middle school, high school building. But then, then points out on the next slide, um, the, the addition and then the renovation to some of those restrooms. So this is important, it will be on the website and on the fact sheet, it's going to be everywhere, but this is, um, an important piece. Um, next one is the investment. So we made this pie chart and I, I find this really important because it shows that ninety one percent of the dollars for this referendum goes to capital maintenance. So it's build aging building systems and like other critical infrastructure things. It's not, it's nothing fancy, it's not a new track. I mean, it's nothing like showy, it's, these are like critical maintenance issues that the school needs. So ninety one percent of that dollar value goes to those things. And then the other pie pieces shows the, the front entrance renovation as well as, you know, making, bringing those restrooms up to ADA compliance. So I found this really important too, as you are out being the spokesperson of this referendum. It's good to know like the ratio of dollars being spent on critical maintenance products. Um, as we go ahead, so we, we have a thing, we're going to add this to the website too, but this is a why now. We're trying to explain to your community why now is the best time to do this, this project. There's a couple of bullet points here. Um, you know, basically Kevin won't want me to say this, but that it, you know, the, the district is virtually debt free from a past referendum. Um, you know, going to the, the question of can you build a new school? And you know, that seems to be a question that people have asked, so we, we addressed that. The facilities assessment study had twenty one millions dollars worth of maintenance needs. And we're addressing those within this referendum plus the ten year capital maintenance plan. So that helps, you know, address those questions to your community, why, why is now the best time to act on this? Okay, next slide. So something that we just added today was an F A Q page on your website. Um, in meeting with the district and with the long range planning committee, the most frequently asked question that they brought to us was, why can't we just build a new school? So we did address that question, it is on your website now, it was part of the social media post this week. Um, but that, you know, if you look at this slide, this is the answer that we have. You know, there's, there's two reasons for that. One, the debt is, you know, basically bigger than your school can, can take out. And the tax impact for taking out that much, that much debt would be, um, bigger than your community has relayed that they could handle.
Yeah, and Becca, do you mind if I jump in for a second?
Absolutely, yeah, go ahead.
Um, no, and I, I think that, um, first of all, Kevin Mullin from Baird and, uh, thanks. I'll echo, uh, Becca and Megan's, um, thank you and allowing us to be there virtually. It, you know, lets us cover a, a lot of space in. Uh, limited amount of time, but you know, I think it's really important, um, to have this, uh, slide as part of the presentation. And we commonly refer to this like anecdotally as like the elephant in the room and every community has one. And I think for you, some, one of, uh, the partners at the district had mentioned that, you know, when they realized that, you know, it wasn't possible to build a new school, that they went through like this little, you know, this short period of mourning. Uh, you know, thinking about having a new school and then realizing that it just was not practical. But I think it's really important to kind of quantify that. Uh, and so Becca had mentioned that, you know, school districts are limited. And we, we, school districts actually have a fair amount of latitude in terms of what they can borrow. But you're limited to borrowing no more than ten percent of your property tax base. Um, and so for you, when we were looking at this project, that amount was forty six million dollars. Um, was your limit. Uh, the cost of a new school, um, exceeded that limit. It was, you know, roughly fifty four million dollars. And that was before, uh, we considered the cost of land purchase and some of the site work. And so it really just, i- i- it, it extends beyond the means that the school district has for paying it back. And, you know, as Becca mentioned, one of those things that's kind of a, uh, yeah, a result of that is that if you were to borrow that much, even if you could. Um, your tax impact for that would be very substantial, you know, basically double the tax for the school district, which just, you know, I, I can't imagine that that would. Um, be something that the community would support. So sorry to step in, but I just, you know, I felt that was really important to kind of acknowledge.
No, I appreciate that. Actually, the next slide is tax impact anyhow, so Kevin, you can keep it lower.
Perfect, yeah, well, no, so thanks. And Becca alluded to this earlier and, um, no surprise, uh, as we kind of distilled the information down. Um, you know, the cost of fourteen point four three million dollars, that when you factor that out. And we assumed borrowing over two twenty year cycles, so borrowing, uh, once in two thousand twenty five for twenty years. And then again, for the remaining portion of the borrowing in two thousand twenty six for twenty years at current market rates, plus, you know, some cushion to be conservative. Uh, that tax impact, uh, shakes out to roughly, uh, a dollar ninety nine per thousand. Um, so to give that some context, we've used these, you know, fair market value, uh, breaks, a hundred thousand, uh, dollar property would pay an annual, uh, cost of a hundred and ninety nine dollars for this project. So that's an additional one ninety nine to what they're already paying in terms of school taxes. Um, and on a monthly basis, that equates to, you know, sixteen dollars and fifty eight cents. And then we scaled that out, uh, out to three hundred thousand dollars. So people can have a, an estimate of what that actually looks like. Um, so again, I'll, you know, kind of, uh, the other elephant in the room this time of year with November referendums. Um, it's very common for communities to be going through a reassessment cycle. Um, and that's probably a question that will come up and will be addressed. Here you'll notice that these school property tax increases are denominated in fair market value, which is different than assessed value. Um, fair market value is what school districts use to, um, uh, spread out their tax burden amongst municipal governments. Um, a reassessment just brings the assessment in line with fair market value. And if that ends up being a bigger conversation in the community, we've got tools and resources to help, uh, your taxpayers understand that, you know, it's not, uh, something that is going to dramatically impact them in terms of what they will pay in terms of, uh, the, the cost of this project. Next slide, please.
I have a question.
Oh, I thought I was going to get out of it with, uh, out a question on reassessment.
Somebody asked me the other day, I didn't have a clue. Um, when you're talking about having two separate loans, like are you going to have more at the very beginning and less for the second one? Or is it just split it in half or how are you doing that?
Yeah, no, so there's some strategy involved i- in that. Um, uh, so it's likely that the majority of the borrowing would be done in the first phase and a portion of it in the second phase. Um, so depending on where interest rates and reinvest, so when you borrow for this project. Um, you're not going to need the money all at once, but you borrow, you know, at least a, a portion of it, uh, at one time. And you invest that money until it's needed. Uh, the interest income that you receive on that is considered arbitrage income for federal tax purposes. Yes, it does get this boring. Um, so it's considered, uh, arbitrage income and there are guidelines around how much you can earn. Uh, and if you earn too much, it's possible that you may have to rebate some of that earning back. Um, so there's. Strategy involved in, you know, if we can borrow, uh, less than fifteen million or less. Um, you have three years to spend that money and you don't have to worry about giving any of that interest income that you earn back. Uh, so that's one of the considerations that we'll consider as we get closer to the borrowing. But the other reason that we wanted to split that into two pieces, into two phases, was to minimize the tax impact and the tax burden to people over the period of time that they're paying it back. So the state limits you to repayment over twenty years. Um, if you're not going to need a portion of, of that money until the second year for construction and we borrow it then, that effectively gives us twenty one years to pay that back. Um, the school improvements are going to last much longer, uh, than twenty one years. And so it just gives us an opportunity to spread that cost over the people that will benefit and the future taxpayers that will benefit from some of these improvements. So, you know, that's really, you know, big picture, uh, why we're doing that. There are a lot of other subtle reasons that we can talk about in more detail if you'd like.
Thank you.
I have a question also. The six sixty three per one thousand, was that based on the forty six million estimate or the fifty four million estimate?
Uh, I believe that that was based on the forty five million dollar estimate. I think that that was our max.
Yes, okay. Um, okay, excellent. And then in the, um, I can't remember if it was the frequently asked questions. Um, it said, oh, the, like the community surveys said we wouldn't tolerate more than eighteen million. Um, but as we know, the survey wasn't about building a new school. So like, I know that that's like a very nuanced thing, but later on in the frequently asked questions, a little bit deeper under the how do we choose this path? This might not be fresh for you, Kevin, but, or it's just like a comment, I guess. I wonder if we can embrace it a little bit differently. It's just like, based on the findings, or I'm sorry, uh, no district in Wisconsin has passed referendum with such a high mill rate impact. So that makes the option also like impractical. I feel like that resonates a little bit more than, well, the survey said, because the survey wasn't about building a new school, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah, that's fair. I, I think it's just, you know, i- i- it's like one of those and common sense just sounds maybe, you know, too demeaning, like, oh, why wouldn't you think of that? But, you know, like when you double your tax rate, your tax rate would be the highest in the state if you were to add six sixty to, you know, your current tax rate. And so, you know, I just don't. And so, you know, I just don't think, you know, you know who you are, you know?
Right.
Uh, Washburn probably with your, your community wouldn't feel comfortable knowing that they were the, you know, highest taxed community, school district in the state.
Yeah.
I, I'm assuming.
Yeah, so I don't know. I just appreciate both angles, you know?
Yeah, no, I think that's really good input.
Even though it wasn't about building a new school, they told us what their, what their tolerance is. I don't know. Um, I think something else that you had said at long range planning is that sometimes the uh, the voters don't necessarily think about how you get to solve the problem, like new school or improvements. They just, like, what was it, like seventy percent of voters, they've done surveys on this, like seventy percent of voters say it's really just about the number. You know, how, like, what is the impact on my, on my taxes?
Right.
Yeah, they don't necessarily think about the outcome or like how to get there. Yes. And so I just, I wanted to like say that out loud. So it's kind of in my head because that question's come up like a couple of times and it's just, it, all of this makes sense. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's all written in here. So I li- I like the FAQs that you guys all did and it was great. So thanks.
That's fun.
Sure. So I think, you know, one other thing, two, two other uh, mill rate comparisons that were important to include. The first is just in kind of a peer um, comparison. So we've included uh, real uh, comparative tax rates uh, for some of the peers in your area, just to give you a sense as to where Washburn's current tax rate. So this was for two thousand twenty three, twenty fours tax rate um, last year's, you know, the one, the budget that we're in right now and just finishing. You're, you know, kind of right in the middle of your peers, um, but also uh, below what is the state average for K twelve school districts at seven dollars and twenty two cents. So your five dollar and eighty one cent tax rate is below the average and kind of in the middle of your peers. I would say it's also worth noting that Drummond over on the very far right hand side has just passed a, a very large uh, referendum for both operations and for capital. Um, and they were the lowest tax rate in the state. So it's common for communities, school districts in your area to have relatively low tax rates. Because there's a lot of property value behind the students in your area. Because you live in a very desirable area and a lot of people like to live near the lake and will pay money to have property in your lakes. So many of the communities have lower tax rates relative to the average. The other comparison that we wanted to provide for tax rate uh, perspective was a historical um, tax rate uh, summary for this Washburn schools. So we went back to two thousand seventeen, eighteen and showed where the tax rate was at that period of time and where it's gone. And um, obviously there's been a significant drop in tax rates. One thing that I want to caution everyone about, um, this does not mean that your, that the taxes that people have been paying have been going down. Because a big reason that your tax rate has been going down is because, as I mentioned earlier, property values in your area have been increasing uh, substantially because it's a desirable place to live. So, you know, one of the reasons that the tax rate has gone down is because you've held um, your levy relatively steady over the years. But also the, the, the property value that supports your school district has been growing uh, considerably. So those two things together have caused your tax rate to go down.
Perfect. So next slide is upcoming marketing deliverables. So you're going to get um, the presentation boards, which will probably go on the entrances of both of your school. These boards is a, as like a condensed version of the fact sheet where any one parent or community member in your lobby walking by can kind of read through it and get most of the facts. There'll also be posters, eleven by seventeen inch posters, which we can um, hang up at like district friendly businesses or at the library or like places around your community that have a bulletin board where, you know, we like to do that too. Um, and then coming up, like I talked about, there's going to be the mailer, which is going to be the fact sheet. So that will hit mailboxes about the week of September twenty fourth. Then there'll be another mailer as we get closer to voting day. So that will remind folks of where they can vote and maybe hit hot topics that we haven't heard about yet, but we will hear about in the next thirty days. Weekly social media posts, we keep updating the website, including the FAQs. And then other community events, which Denise and the board and the district will go do her roadshow for. Those are all things coming up within the, you know, all before November fourth, when the voting day is the next day. Next slide. So the, the next thing is there's community information nights coming up on October first and twenty fourth. So Denise will leave that with um, basically a slideshow like this, telling the community all the things there is to know about this referendum. We typically like to see some board members at those things as it gives her some backup and then you want to help answer questions to community members. And just show that support for the, the referendum in general that you, you know, you guys were really the, you know, you passed the resolution to, to bring it to this point. So it's nice to, you know, have your face there too. So keep that in mind. And then, okay, next slide. So finally, we're going to talk about how you can help as a board member. So like I said, attend a community information night. Tell the, the district team if there's information, if there's community events coming up soon, maybe uh, like a booster club meeting that they don't know about. Or any kind of um, social engagement that there's maybe ten to forty people there, that would be a great time to even, maybe even have the fact sheet present or bring a board to something to educate your, your voting population there. So I do task you with reading the, the FAQ sheet. It's live on the website as of a couple of hours ago. So if you can go on there, pick through that, see if you've heard any other questions. And then um, if you have related questions from your community, shoot that over to Denise and then we'll add that and with a, with a nice answer to the website. We also want your feedback on the website. Make sure it's easy to use. Think of a person that doesn't know the journey of this referendum. Coming on cold to your website, maybe they're not even, you know, they never go to your website for anything because they're not current parents of, of the district. Like, kind of audit that and make sure that the journey and it's, it's easy to find the facts. I don't know, we're, we're open to feedback. We were kind of really deep in it. So it'd be great to have fresh eyes on those, those things. And the last thing you can do is share the message. Um, like I said, you guys are the ones that brought this, this question to your community. And um, help, help us get this thing across the finish line on November fifth. So the more you can talk about it. And you know, hit those, hit those key component pieces of that this is, you know, the ninety one percent is all capital maintenance. Like, this is nothing, you know, frilly or fancy. This is, you know, like your home. If you need a new heating system, this is an essential thing. So that's, that's what we ask you to do. And then final slide is questions.
I um, I had a conversation the other day with uh, a person who represents the Wisconsin Public Education Network. Are you aware of that group?
I'm not personally, but.
Okay. Well, anyway, she, she said that they have a lot of information too on how to um, work on a referendum and they can get it like um, walking lists, things where you can go door to door and that can give you a kind of an idea of where would be places to stop and talk to people. Um, and so I was just wondering if that would be, would fit in with what you're doing, if we could do something together or there's a concern of bringing another group in to kind of help direct this to.
This is my again, and I, hello, can you hear me again? I know my reception's not great. I'm trying. Um, I have seen them work on the advocacy component of things before. So as we've shared before, the district can only do factual information. However, um, I have seen that group advocate um, for districts with yard signs and creating a grassroots movement. So um, something that they could do, but the board would have to obviously stay factual.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions for this team?
I don't think so. I think we're good.
Wonderful. Well, thanks so much for your time today, guys.
That's great. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
All right.
Bye, guys.
Bye.
Yep, bye. So I have to let you know that I had a different agenda item for the conversation around the spreadsheet. And then when I learned that they wanted to present, I actually moved it, but I didn't remove it from the board report one. So that's, so I just now am wondering if we want to talk about the spreadsheet and just, I can share that with everyone. And I think I did. And you can just see the different things that are on there. So it's um, the two events in October, the first and twenty fourth. And then we had the Lions Club. And we did put Rick Seppa in parentheses, kind of hoping maybe along with any board members that might be really involved. I don't know how comfortable.
I can't, I can't really commit unless I know the dates. And so I started kind of looking up and trying to find out, oh, when is the, like, I know our town met last week and like, I just don't remember off the top of my head when the dates are.
Perfect.
So we help, much helpful. Yeah, it'll be much more helpful for me to sign up when the dates are.
Oh, perfect. And Heidi's going to reach out to the town um, boards to find out when their readings are and if we could get on their agendas, probably in October.
Yeah.
And we'll put those dates in. And then the city of Washburn was another one. We put both of the nursing homes on there, just wondering if, um, if Julie might be interested in sharing any of the information with the residents there. And then just anything else you guys can think of, you know, you can add and we can have individual conversations about that also. Call, you can call me, text me and we could talk through any of those. We don't have like. Oh, that's a good question. I'll put that on here. Do you know where those? Right here in Washburn. So that would give you, so October. Oh, yeah, absolutely. The coffee groups that you can think of. Or community groups.
Bunch of the retired guys get down at the coffee shop like that.
Yes. We could find out like when the pickleball tournament is and like have a, like event at the club before they have pickleball, you know, and see if like you can get some engagement there.
Maybe the club would be a spot to think.
To kind of like see what programming they have and then you could like piggyback a, a coffee, like ask me session around a time when you think people will be there. Or something.
All right, that's perfect. I don't know if there are any band, do we have any band or fair concerts? In October?
That's March eight.
Yeah, we do have that. We'll do some more administratively, we're not kind of brainstormed a bit, but I feel like have a pretty comprehensive list. Ivy's going to go to the WCES, the Education Foundation. Meeting and share there. I think they said thirty, yeah. And then we'll have those, the big display, a couple that we can take on the road with the presentation. And then a couple to put up at the schools. So we'll, and then we'll have actual fact sheets too that we can distribute.
Then I assume it's like the grocery store.
Yes, yes.
I'm going to get everybody uh, bedazzled, ask me t-shirts.
Yes, that would be fun. With the um, with the brand, we need a logo.
Yeah, I get the logo. Ask me.
That would be fun. Heidi, I'll make a note.
There you go. All right, well, thank you. That's great.
Let's move on. Um, financial reports and.
Um, I reviewed the financial reports last week and everything was super organized, presented and aligned and um, accurate and looking good. So I would move to approve the financial reports.
Favor. Post. Consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Any discussion? All favor.
Right.
Time. Post. Discussion items.
There's not a lot to report other than uh, Mike McCarthy at the DPI shared uh, in terms of like going into the next biennial budget, they're really going to wait uh, until after the election to like move things forward. But a big focus on special education funding and that's an area that they're going to be asking for significant changes. Yep. So that's kind of just fresh off the press, but nothing else. I think it'll, it'll rev up here in the next month or two.
I just remembered the other day that the old Cis building is going to be that library, bond library as they're moving and repairing the bond library. They're going to move stuff into the old Cis building.
Oh, really?
And, you know, yeah, it's a big move. Act twenty six.
And so at twenty, um, we've been giving some updates on even extra couple. So this won't be new information and I'll keep integrating it to the curriculum. Um, but the next and the overall achievement is that we on the changes for us will be the list is there. Uh, so we have a universal screen. And we've been doing this for many years, um, but now they're requiring a, a specific uh, plus what they're going to use. I've heard really great things about it so far. Um, it'll be required study in January, but we're getting started. Trying to do this for two different. So we're going to start right away for going through those trainings right now and getting student traffic for that. Uh, one adjustment is it will be, they're creating some difference. And then um, you know, there are sorts of specific requirements. So once a universal screeners in the history, they give a diagnostic assessment. Especially if they're below the twenty percent. And this will be really familiar from all of the schools. Or that would be that whole confidence indicated for Fred. And so we already have individual and again, it won't be very different, but there are some very specific timelines on how soon that diagnosis. Of students being committed. And then I'm creating an individualized plan, which we're already doing, but there's some specific so, um, and feeling overall really confident to fit, um, to start up to adjust some lighters. Saying on top of all things act twenty that help um, and then to show up for amazing staff who not only is not through all of the but is the one thing we're kind of looking at district wide and for example, the application of these practices. Other content areas, it's a little literacy, but it's also a bit of mass where ours are in the area. Content areas and in upper grade levels. Um, there will be some financial pieces to it. They're offered free of cost or they're reimbursed. But if you want to use the diagnostic portion. But math. So it'll be a little bit of an adjustment. And the other requirement will be that professional. Every teacher from four K principal um, has to take a pretty extensive professional. Um, but most of our staff. So we started a, a few of us did it in first round in the last winter, a big portion of it this summer. And we continue to either provide that training for new staff or even testing. And we continue to either provide that training for new staff or even testing.
So A and B will replace what you've been using.
Yeah, so previously we had PALS, which we really liked that one-on-one assessment. Um, PALS is no longer. The best year. We're not using Fastbridge. Uh, Fastbridge is fine for us in these requirements. Um, but we are not set to.
What amazing staff to be able to like.
Yeah.
Talk through that professional level and everybody kind of does it in unison. Like, that's incredible. So thank you, guys.
So third grade, they'll be doing, cause they'll, they'll still be doing the standardized test.
We still have that, so first year for the state assessment before the exam. And we're finding that the star gathers, they are even more accurate in that. And so we're gonna give very mindful, not overtested, that grade is. On the bright side, means a big portion of it is just. Um, and so that will look different. There is still stream portion, but it's. Um, and so, yeah, when you have to do a brief assignment, it's a lot.
Yeah. Well, yeah, oh, yeah. Um, okay, we're going down to the individual action items. So we have the updates for the athletic coach handbook.
I would second it.
Any discussion?
Did we want to mention what was changed or? CPR, right?
Yes, so there was uh, the understanding of CPR was every other year, but now it's a yearly requirement. So that's been updated as well as the first aid. Component. So just making sure we're in line with the WIAA.
Favor?
I.
The post. Period.
Yeah, so I did not have the annual meeting on my calendar since the July date. And as we were planning our community events. You know, looked at the calendar, looked at the first and the twenty-fourth and thought, well, the twenty-fourth looks great. And so we. Booked that date and then just this week I discovered it was when the annual meeting was scheduled. So. Since our fact sheet and all of those things were already printed, I just felt like. Be easiest if we could move the date by a couple of days instead of Thursday, maybe make it Tuesday. I know that's, you know, Thursday is kind of the day, day of the week that we have meetings, but. The public will easily adapt, I think, to a change. If you're all available on the twenty-second, um, that's the Tuesday. So then there would not be a meeting on Thursday. It would just be the referendum community night. So double check your calendars. We could also look at the twenty-ninth of October as well, which is the following Tuesday.
The twenty-second would definitely be better.
Okay. Okay, for Ellen, okay.
We have the motion to change that date to the twenty-second.
Second, my second.
How the discussion? All favor?
Good.
Don't be carried. Six, isn't it?
This started six? It will start, I believe it is six o'clock. Yes.
High School Castle Guard Cheer and Palm Club. Yeah, well, so we have a few uh parents who would like to start a, well, one bit, one more series, she's our district. Um, her daughter also runs the dance school in town and they really love. And so they would like to start a Castle Guard Cheer and Palms Club where they would get a group together who would be in charge of like the spirit of the games. Not just, you know, just football or basketball, but coming and making sure that we have representation to raise up all of the potential at things. Uh, and so looking through their paperwork, uh, it's not going to, there's no fund that needs to come from the school. We'll do everything through fundraising. Um, so they're looking at being able to maybe like the uniforms and pom poms and all of that stuff. Um, for whomever it is that would like to join that club. So it's open to anyone. It's not just, you know. Email or mail, anybody can be in that club. And so, um, we talked about it a little bit. I think it's a great thing to start here as a club. Um, and just let whoever's interested in part of the spirit of the club. Be a part of that. Anybody who wants. Yes, no, no, they can just join. A lot of it will be, you know, making signs, cats have a gate or that. There's a waiting. I don't think so, no.
Not at the time.
It would just be.
Yeah, just.
Could they choose to. Some must choose to carpool to.
Yeah. Their own way, yeah.
Any discussion? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the addition of a high school castle guard cheer and palms club.
Any other discussion? Favorite?
I have five.
Can you move to a adjourn?
Second.
A favor?
Bye.
Only one person left to adjourn?
Come on, guys. Hi. Motion carried.
I like it too much.
Yeah, why?